Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting, February 21st. So, welcome all. And just to note, we have regrets this evening from Jackie and Chris Fournier. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. Do we have any declarations of conflicts for folks that are here at the meeting tonight? Okay, seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda?
So approved.
Okay, moved by Bobby Kenny, seconded by Counselor Beck, all those in favor. Okay, thank you very much. All right, an adoption of the minutes from February 13th. Okay, okay, yep. So moved by Rose Mary, seconded by Counselor McCabe, all those in favor of the minutes, great. And any business arising from those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we can move right on to our reports. And our first report is 24 Lower Malpec Road, and that is Michael. Over to you, Michael.
Awesome. So I'm here to present a major variance request at 24 Lower Malpec Road. For those who aren't familiar, this is the hotel project with the affordable housing behind it, and this is the third phase of that development, so, just so everyone's aware. The Planning and Heritage Department recommends that the application for a major variance to the maximum permitted building height for a proposed apartment building on the subject property be approved, subject to a development agreement. They're specifically seeking relief from the maximum current allowable height of 15 meters in order to accommodate a building with an average height of 19.7 meters, representing a 24% increase, intended to allow for the construction of a multi-unit residential apartment building with 67 apartment units as the third phase of the development. Some property details, the property is a 5.07 acre, partially developed parcel. The first two phases of development have been, one phase is already completed and one phase is just completing now, just having gotten its occupancy permit. It is bounded by the north by an existing community of low-density residential, a parcel used for a place of worship, and a parcel used as an automotive dealership. This is the Honda dealership on Lower Malpec Road. It is bounded by the east and south by McNeil's Pond, and to the west by Lower Malpec Road. In accordance with Section 3.9.3 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, written notice by ordinary mail explaining the intent and purpose of the major variance was sent to 29 property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property, soliciting their written comments for for and against the proposal on January 19, 2024. The deadline to submit written comments for the application was noon on Friday, February 2, 2024, and as of that deadline, one letter has been received, which was in opposition mostly for environmental concerns. The concerns that were received were about the adjacent watershed of Ellen's Creek and McNeil's Pond, and potential issues that would stem from that. The first phase of development did have an environmental assessment occur, and that report was part of the review process. The development agreement for the first phase also indicates that the adherence to the environmental protections from the province would need to be required, or would need to occur on site. This is essentially the site plan of the proposed development, so as you can see in the rear there, that's the building we're talking about. There's one level of underground parking, and the building itself with top of that podium, so it's the building to the right of the site plan, the first two phases having already been developed. This is the elevation. As you can see, it's very similar in kind of scope to the building that's already there, and I believe it's the exact same height. So the first phase was granted a variance as part of that process to, for the height as well, and this is for the second phase of development, hoping to get that same variance. Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to approve a major variance to increase the maximum permitted height for a proposed apartment building in the C2 zone from 15 meters, 49.2 feet, to an average maximum permitted height of 19.7 meters, 64.5 feet, in order to allow for a five-story apartment building to be built on the subject property, subject to a development agreement.
Thank you for that, Michael. Any questions? Is the developer with us this evening for this project? Okay, all right. Any questions then from the board for either the planning staff? Go ahead, Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, and thanks for your report, Michael. My big thing is that when I look at one of the shortcomings is the proximity to the water course to the wetland where we know that it's important, and I guess, I know there's always minimum requirements for development when it becomes developing around the wetland, but I think it's something as simple as putting bales of hay to prevent silt runoff. Like, for this, I really think we need to be ensuring that in a development agreement or something, that there's a really solid plan for when we start disrupting the land around there. These wetlands, we spent a lot of money and time in our ponds and wanted to make sure our water and our streams are well-run, so I'm okay with moving this on, but I really want to ensure that there's something in there more than just a bale of hay to prevent silt runoff into these protected water base.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, I had the exact same question myself, and it was on page 21. And it was talking about the watershed plan that was already in place there for Phase 1, but previous to that, it did say that the Ellen's Creek Waters should management group are active, and it's possible that concerns may be raised. I do know that that group has done a lot of work with the upper part of North River Road. They're currently involved in doing a lot of work on another project that is underway as well. I think it would be prudent on our part to make sure that they are brought into this conversation, however that works, whether it's part of the development agreement that's in there, but I agree with Counselor McCabe that there has to be, I'd like to see them in there, a little more active role in this, and to have a bit more certainty, I guess, that that area will be, because, and again, it was identified as an area of concern by the local in one of the letters of opposition that we did receive too. So I think I would certainly support what Counselor McCabe was saying, because I share her concerns as well. So I'd be in favor of the project moving on, as long as that is properly addressed. And I don't know, maybe could you explain how that might work, Michael? I'm not, because I'm not sure myself.
Let's see if, okay, I didn't know if my mic was on. It would likely come into place in the development agreement. So similar to the first phase that required like adherence to the provincial standards, we would likely include that in the development agreement, first of all, because that was in the first development agreement as well. They provided a sediment control plan with the first phase of the development that goes over silt fencing that's supposed to be along that barrier. The other kind of point I will make, so in answer to your question, the development agreement would likely be where that would be, and adding something to say that that would have to be respected is what's already there. I'm not sure, but including the group, that's, that I'm less clear of how that would be written. But the environmental, the sediment control plan that currently exists does kind of seek to create a barrier along the McNeil's Pond. The other thing I wanted to note is that that group has not contacted us as part of the notice posting of this. So just, I haven't had contact with that group as of this point.
So, Michael, if I hear you correctly, will it be in the development agreement, or will it likely be in the development agreement?
It would be in the development agreement, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor McCabe.
And just to follow up, and in my point, because I always know that they're going to protect the wetland area environmentally and whatever, but there is that bare minimum that goes into that. And I know because we've done Wright's Pond, we've drudged Wright Pond numerous times, it's cost the city a lot of money to get in and do that kind of work. So maybe we could just step it up a little bit, instead of like a silt fence that silt still gets through. I'm just saying, if we're going to really protect and spend the money, that we should make sure it's not just your bare minimum.
I guess that's where I was thinking that they may have something to offer on this, I'm not sure, and I don't know what role we do with those, but I just do know that that's a highly prized area, that they've put a lot of work and focus and drawn attention to. I know they've done shoreline remediation and lots of things up in that northern part of the North River Road. So anyway, let's just make sure that we take care of that, would be my one wish.
Okay, thank you for that, folks. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael, what's the minimum setback in this case to the development site from the?
I have it here, just let me check. Oh, I don't have it as a written number, I have it as the buffer zone in Part 3 of the Wetland Protection Regulations. Just give me one sec to ask, 15 meter.
Okay. And have you been presented with the flood risk data?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question?
Have you been presented with the flood risk data?
I don't believe a flood plan, I don't believe it's in the flood zone. It's not in the flood zone, I'm copying.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Sin. Any other questions? Okay, so we have a recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Department to encourage the Planning Board to recommend to council that we approve this major variance. So do I have somebody who wants to move a resolution? Moved by Sin, seconded by Lee. So all those in favor of moving this along to council? Anybody against? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. That's great. Thank you, Michael. So we're now moving on to our next item on the agenda, and that is Hidden Valley, PID 1047562. We have the developers here with us this evening, the applicant, as well as Laurel Palmer Thompson. Planner 3 is here to present the application. Over to you, Laurel, thank you.
Members of the Planning Board, this is an application to amend Appendix A, the future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan from low-density residential to high-density residential, and to amend Appendix G zoning map of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from low-density residential single zone R2S to apartment residential zone R4. So, property details, the property is a 21.3 acre parcel of land. It's bounded to the north by a wetland and water course, an additional R2S zoning, to the east by Malpec Road and Country View Estates subdivision consisting of low-density residential dwellings, and to the south by vacant land zoned R2S, and to the west by a water course with a tree buffer zone. Further west is additional low-density residential. So, details of the request, it's intended to allow for a multi-unit residential development consisting of apartment dwelling units in the form of 10 separate apartment buildings, approximately 600 units total on 10 new lots. And I'm just going to flip ahead, just so you can quickly see the site plan. This would be the lots. So legislative requirements, in accordance with Section 3.10, Amendments to the Bylaw and Rezoning of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, on January 8, 2024, City Council approved the request to proceed to public consultation. On January 9, 2024, written notification was sent to property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property, and in response to the 12 notification letters, in response to the 12 notification letters, there was 12 letters of support and five letters of opposition, along with a petition in opposition containing 106 signatures. That was received prior to the 12 noon deadline on Wednesday, January 2024, and additional letters were also received after the 12 noon deadline. Following the deadline, we did receive one letter of support, three letters of opposition, and one neutral letter. So comments received from the public, many of the comments regarding the development centered around concerns about access onto Malpec Road, traffic impacts that the development will have on the effects of the level of service on Malpec Road, concerns about inadequate parking, concerns about impacts on the adjacent wetland, and comments about the location of the development in relation to services and amenities. I'll just flip to the map. So, in response to some of the comments received at the public meeting, staff notes that Malpec Road, it's an internal arterial highway, and it's owned and controlled by the Provincial Department of Transportation. The proposal was sent to DTI staff for review, and provincial staff have provided comments and support at the proposal, subject to requirement for controlled intersection prior to the first apartment building being occupied. The intersection would have to have dedicated turning lanes to serve the existing and proposed residential areas, and may also include two eastbound and westbound lanes on Route 2. So depending on future development in the area and upgrading plans for the intersection on Route 2, that would be at the corner of Sherwood Road and country, Route 2 and Sherwood Road. The intersection at Country View, it may be redeveloped in the future as a multi-lane roundabout. The applicant was not required to provide a traffic study, as provincial DTI staff were able to provide traffic modeling for Malpec Road, Highway 2 in this area. And I know that was one of the comments from the public at the meeting, they were wondering if a traffic study was done, but provincial staff were able to do that themselves. So the province has required that the access for the development be placed across from Country View Estates, and that enough land be set aside to accommodate the roundabout in the future to facilitate traffic movements. And in term, a signalized intersection is to be constructed to the satisfaction of the province. The access to the north would also be required to have a right-in, right-out for turning movements only. So... This access here would be right-in, right-out. The developer, they have provided additional land as requested by the province to accommodate road widening and the future roundabout, and you can see that right along here was the additional land that was provided, and this additional land was also provided for the roundabout in the future. The city's Public Works Department, they've also reviewed the development proposal, and the manager of Public Works has required that a connector be provided to the land to the south, and you'll see that right here. You'll see a temporary cul-de-sac. As this land gets developed, that will be extended. So all future road network across these lands will need to provide connection from Malpec Road to Lower Malpec Road. So, just let me explain, as this piece of property gets developed, there will be connectors across to this piece of land to Malpec Road, Lower Malpec Road. So concerning stormwater management, an internal stormwater management plan was developed as part of Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the subdivision. Those concerns were raised also at the public meeting. When, when that is, when we begin to deal with Phase 3, if this zoning request is approved by council, we would require an updated stormwater management plan designed by a professional engineer, and it will be required during the subdivision phase prior to subdivision approval. The plan will also be reviewed by Public Works and Provincial Department of Transportation of Infrastructure before it receives approval. So depending on estimated stormwater flows and stormwater capacity, stormwater management ponds may be required for this development. This will be also determined during the subdivision review process. So to give some context... process. So, um, to give some context, this property is located within the neighborhood of Winslow. The immediate area, it consists of low-density residential development, R1L and R2S, with some higher-density residential and commercial development offering convenient services further north along, um, Malpeck Road. There are major shopping centers and related services, um, within a five-point, 1.5 to 2.5 kilometer distance to the south of the development along Malpeck Road. The area of the city currently does not meet this, the criteria for walkable neighborhood due to the lack of sidewalks, and, um, it's not within a five-minute walk, um, to shopping and support services. Shopping and support services are located within a 15 to 30-minute walk. Sidewalks are located further north along Malpeck Road, but are not located in the immediate area. Transit, um, service is provided in this area of the city as per the T3 Transit's Route Number 11. So if development proceeds, then a dedicated transit, uh, stop would be provided. As development progresses in the area, the tri- it will trigger a need for sidewalks and active transportation trails. This, along with, um, dedicated public transit, will contribute to enhancing and expanding the walkability of the neighborhood from the current situation. Um, the concept drawings show surface parking for this development. So you'll see, these areas in black are all surface parking. Um, at the building permit stage, uh, formal parking calculations will be conducted to ensure that each building meets the parking requirements. And, um, lock coverage and density determines if the lock can support surface parking or if underground parking will be, um, required. So I, I know you're all aware that residents commented at the meeting, um, that the development didn't incorporate, um, enough parkland. Um, and I just wanted to note that, um, during, uh, Phase 1 of the subdivision, the Parks and Recreation Department requested that parkland be provided along the, um, water course to accommodate a walking trail. And land was also allocated in the subdivision for a playground, and that was also approved through resolution of council. So you'll see the wetland here, the park, the trail is along here, and then, um, a little bit further north is land allocated, um, for, um, a playground. So, um, the parkland dedication, it represents 10% of the overall land parcel. In addition to parkland, uh, the zoning and development bylaw also requires 10% of a lot to be dedicated to landscaping. So, um, given this is a high-density development, it would be appropriate for the developers to enact restrictive covenants for each property and the overall development to ensure that there's a high quality of landscaping incorporated on each property. Um, so in addition to landscaping plans, um, they can be required at the, um, the building permit stage. We would ask that those be incorporated so we're more aware of, of what the proposed, um, landscaping is for the site, where they're gonna, um, locate hard and soft landscaping trees, et cetera. Concerns were raised at the public meeting about the effects of higher-density development and what that may have on the, uh, wetland. So to address these concerns, staff would also like to clarify that prior to approval of Phase 1 of the subdivision, the developers, um, worked with Donald Armanard. Um, he's a provincial environmental scientist with Granville Ridge Consulting. Um, he prepared a site and reconnaissance environmental, um, uh, development options report, and recommendations were outlined in that report, and they were implemented during construction of the subdivision. Um, the Provincial Department of Environment, they were, provided the report, and they delineated the buffer zone, um, to ensure it was not disturbed, um, by related construction activities during development. Uh, the developers have also worked with Ellen's Creek Watershed Group, and they have had on, ongoing dialogue with the group during development of the subdivision. Planning staff has also consulted with the city's utility department, um, to determine if there is adequate capacity for servicing to support this, um, development and the density. The utility department has contracted their own consultant to work in conjunction with the developer to conduct a servicing review. And this will allow the utility department to determine if existing services are adequate, or if additional upgrades will be required to facilitate the, the development. If, um, servicing upgrades are required, this will occur prior to the subdivision approval as part of the future roads and services agreement between the developer and the city. Um, so we would look to make sure that that's outlined in the development agreement. The concept plan also circulated, um, to fire services, and their comments, um, they felt that the proposal meets the requirements for access and dimensions for fire apparatus. Further code review on, um, building permits will be required at the building permit stage. So, um, the official plan, uh, planning staff, we have examined policies of the official plan to determine if the official plan supports this request. And I've outlined those points and key policies in the planning report for your consideration. And some of those things to consider was housing needs and variety and directing physical growth. So from a planning perspective, um, a variety of housing choices are important within a neighborhood. This is supported by the official plan. It's important so there is a, a variety of housing within, um, neighborhoods, um, because as people age, they need to have, um, options, um, for various stages of their lives. The low vacancy rate in Charlottetown, it's presented challenges for people trying to access housing, um, within the city and fully serviced areas and in desirable neighborhoods where they're able to access a variety of amenities. It's been a real challenge over the past few years, and the vacancy rate is high, and that's been outlined, um, by CMHC as well. Um, establishing new density and housing variety in existing built-up areas is more sustainable as it allows for better use of services. This decreases pressure for new urban sprawl related to single-detached subdivisions. And addition, in addition to housing options, increased density also makes new and existing businesses more viable. It supports public transit and contributes to the tax base which allows municipalities to provide better quality service to its residents. Um, in planning practice, when assessing these locations, um, that are appropriate for residential, um, uses, it's fitting to locate residential dwellings, um, and close to amenities and transit and schools and parkland. Um, the proposed site, it is in, within walking distance to parkland and neighborhood amenities. The site, as I stated earlier, it's not within close walking distance, um, to shopping centers. However, those amenities can easily be accessed with the transit service. Um, the site is also within a short bus ride to an elementary school. And I have included in the report a quick summary of the application's positive and neutral attributes, as well as its shortcomings. So, um, given these, um, these considerations, overall, staff is supporting the application, and, um, they're recommending for approval. And if there is any, um, questions that I may answer, feel free. And the developer, Will Safares, is also here to address any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel, we appreciate that. I'm gonna open it up to the board if we have any questions for either Laurel or for the applicant. Go ahead, Councilor McCabe.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, you know, we've received a lot of feedback, as we see for sure, and I know when we have any kind of change, um, to communities, it can be, it can be stressful and impacting. So clarifying, this development is not, it, I'm seeing a buffer, a pathway, and it's going to face Route 2 Malpeck Road. It's not gonna be going through an existing or being plopped in the middle of an existing, uh, R1, R2 zone property. It's kind of on the outskirts here. Is that correct, first question?
Through the chair, um, can you clarify that? Do you mean the, another access road?
So we're not putting apartment buildings in this clear land in the middle of all these housing developments that are already existing. This is kind of on the outskirts, a little bit detached, right?
Yes, so this is Phase 1 of Hidden Valley. This would be Phase 3.
Yeah. But that's what I mean, it's just bordering the highway, and you said there will be a road to connect to lower Malpeck at some point.
It is. Um, so we have, um, Malpeck Road here, and then we have the wetland here, which is a, a natural buffer zone, um, which separates that from the Phase 1 and 2 of Hidden Valley.
And kudos to the Hidden Va- kudos to Hidden Valley people, great, uh, collaboration and prepare work when you have those kind of protected areas around. So I think we can all learn from that pre-work that's been done. Um, so, and I know there was a lot of discussion at our public meeting about sidewalks, which I, I think we're hearing that in every new development that we do, and we know that because it's provincial property, but it's city's responsibility to put the sidewalks in even though it's a provincial highway. I would like to see a little more collaboration and planning around that, too, if we could have something in place moving forward. I know they're working on some new things coming in from Public Works and things for, for some of that to be done. I mean, it's great to say, you know, the more we build and the more infrastructure we're gonna be able to put in place, but I think we know that we need the infrastructure, so some of that collaboration around that can happen. Um, I know you can't make them, but this, these people are working really well with lots of people. Maybe they'll wanna work with us a little bit around some of those things as well. So that was all my only other thoughts.
Through the chair, um, our current road profiles, um, does not include sidewalks, but the manager of Public Works has indicated to me that they are looking to revise those for new subdivisions. Given that this is, um, this is an arterial highway, though, this would be, um, something that the city would have to work in conjunction with the province. So essentially, the province has asked for an additional 10 feet, um, to be located along the road corridor, and I pointed that out earlier, this, this area here. Um, and that would, um, accommodate sidewalks or any additional infrastructure. Uh, as Alan Aiken indicated when he was at our public meeting, he, he did indicate that it is up to the city to provide the sidewalks, but the province will provide the, um, the land, um, within their road corridor to, to do that. And the additional development, I think, will help to trigger, um, the need for those services within the community.
Well, especially when the intersections are gonna be, being constructed and done. I mean, it's a 70 kilometer, I think, mile per hour in that section, or close to it, around there. I mean, you're going at a fairly good speed, and this is 600 units, so that's a lot of people. That if we're promoting walkable communities, we wanna make sure that things are in place for that, for sure.
Yes, I 100% agree with that.
Yep, thank you for that. And, um, I think Alan Aiken also indicated at that public meeting that there was always opportunity for cost sharing when it did come to improving the, the sidewalks and the active transportation trails along the road. I'm sure I heard him say that, which is, you know, which is a great thing, certainly not, not on the developer, but for the, the two levels of government to work together. And we also could note that with the, um, with the changes to our, to our official plan, which will prompt the changes to our zoning and development bylaw, there's certainly opportunity for us to do better in, as we go forward, um, to maybe put things in place that would address what Councilor McCabe has, um, brought up today. So that's just, uh, just as a sidebar. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor, uh, Councilor Beck.
Hey, just on the, uh, on that note about the road widening and the 10 feet, I think Alan did mention that, that 10 feet could be used for road widening as well as part of the roundabout, did he not, at that public meeting? I think he said that was a, uh, a consideration.
He did, and, uh, that's why they requested the additional 10 feet. It was for road widening and to be able to include whatever infrastructure they need. Otherwise, it would have been, um, it tied, it didn't meet their requirements for road corridor width in that area if they were to expand, um, to accommodate the roundabout.
So if you expand the road, does that negate the possibility of sidewalks go, or sidewalk or inactive transportation going in?
No, my understanding is the province has, as well as the city, the city, for example, has, um, a 60-foot wide road corridor requirement. So within that 60 feet, that accommodates the travel portion, as well as areas for sidewalks or, um, uh, water and source services that are underground, electrical, all those things. So the road corridor, um, depending on the type of road, it has to be a certain width to be able to accommodate all those, um, infrastructure.
Okay. All right. Um, I have a question for, I'm not sure whether it's Dan or Will who would answer this. Uh, one's kind of a road question, so it might be Dan, and the other one might be on the building side if, if it's Will, but I don't know. Whoever, whoever can answer my question, anyway. Um, the first one was on the, uh, and it kind of gets, I guess goes back to, uh, in potential, in the interim, there will be a signalized intersection, which will, if approved, would eventually lead into a, uh, roundabout, uh, a double-wide roundabout that would come about. In advance of that, do you do preparatory work knowing that that is potentially, like, when you're doing, you're making that out, the road out and everything, does all that preparatory work get done, that you can start the, the work so that if it does transition into a roundabout, then a lot of that stuff is already done in the preliminary stages? Does that, does that happen, Dan, and, uh? Maybe if you could, if you could speak to the mic, Dan?
Yeah, so, and that's why we had given this extra space to accommodate the roundabout. So the original road would not have the roundabout there, but it would be built in a way that the roundabout could be expanded to when the time came, that the province felt they would need a roundabout there.
Okay. So all that consideration will be done in advance prior to?
Yeah, and that's, like I said, that's why this space hasn't been given, because they knew they would need that coming down the road.
Okay. And maybe the other, the other question I had was around covenants, and it was on page 91. Um, just give me a sec. I was just looking through your, because this, these are all gonna be different people. Like you, I think, if I remember correctly from the meeting, you guys are gonna develop some, you're gonna sell all their ones off, and everyone will have to have their own individual, um, development agreement and all that. But there will be covenants like underground power lines, soft and hard landscaping, the 10% amenity space, the, uh, you know, you guys addressed the enclosed buildings for waste or storing it underground in parking area. The one question I had was around the exterior facade and architectural design. It just says there'll be covenants around that. Can you clarify for me what that would mean, or what that would look like for the various buildings that would potentially be there?
So that's just to make sure that all the buildings are built to today's standards and use professional, high-grade materials so that they're of high quality. So it, it's not detrimental to the neighboring properties and that everyone follows the proper building codes.
And those, um, guidelines or parameters would be outlined in the, is there, so if I'm a new developer coming in, am I clear on your understanding?
If you came to buy a lot, you would have to abide by the covenants that was portfunded in the purchase and sale agreement of each lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rosemary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there's a lot of positives about this application. However, the petition had 106 people's signatures who were against this development. Um, I guess, in terms of land use, were the people who are currently residents in the area, were they informed that this Phase 3 of development was going to happen, is one question? So when they bought their properties, were they informed of that? And secondly, do the developers see any compromise around some of the issues that were identified by the residents?
Thanks, Rosemary. I think I could take a stab on her first question. I think that all three phases were identified, were they not, in the beginning of, many years ago when this, when this comprehensive plan or whatever it might be called was first brought forward to planning? Is that correct, Laurel?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, initially, the, um, all three phases were to be the existing zoning, the R2S zoning. Um, the developers did come in, um, in the past year and request this rezoning application to go to high-density development. So yes, all three phases were to be, um, developed, um, as a subdivision, but this, um, particular piece of property that, um, right here, uh, was intended for lower-density development.
And Rosemary, her second question was in terms of the, was there any thought put into the, um, yeah, compromising, thank you, Councilor Beck, um, around the petition that had been submitted with the residents' concerns? Is that correct, Rosemary? Yeah.
Uh, do you wanna answer some of the things? Yeah, I can take some of it.
Well, you go first, then.
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I'll let the developer talk about, um, the restrictive covenants and what they plan to do as far as the development, but, um, we- what they plan to do as far as the development. But we like in the the planning report, I did outline the concerns that were addressed by the residents or raised by the residents about traffic and transit and those types of items. So those would be things that planning would look at. We also did talk to the developers about making sure that it was a higher-quality development. And we had a discussion, a lengthy discussion about restrictive covenants to make sure that, you know, this is higher-quality development. If they sell the lots, then we want to know that the people that purchase the lots are going to develop something that's to a specific standard, not just to, you know, come in and basically put up a vinyl box with no architectural features or articulation or anything like that. So if there's anything you want to add, Dan?
I think you go first.
Rosemary, was there any follow-up you wanted from from that?
No, I just wanted to ask the question because I have heard of other developers who have had meetings with residents, and it's been quite a positive outcome. I'm not even sure what the compromises might be here, but I was at the public meeting. I took notes on all the concerns. And like the traffic seems to be a big issue, and I don't know if any timelines can be put into, you know, this traffic circle when it's going to be developed and how the traffic's going to be managed. But certainly, there were a lot of concerns came forward at that public meeting.
Yes, through the chair. As far as traffic, that's why we consulted with the Provincial Department of Transportation. They're in charge of that road, not the city. The the head engineer with the province indicated what needs to be in place in order to facilitate this development, sorry. And one of those things is widening the road. The other the other requirement was that a signalized intersection be put in place. And if you'll notice in the report, it he did state that prior to occupancy of the first apartment building, he would want to see that signalized intersection in place. So the roundabout will only happen as development occurs over time, and there's demand and there's need. So a lot of you will probably remember East Royalty when we did the East Royalty Master Plan. We knew that there was going to be a lot of development in that area. We projected about 20 years. So at that time, the province indicated that they wouldn't look to doing any upgrades to St. Peter's Road until those upgrades are those that development happened and it reached a certain threshold. Once it reached a cer- certain threshold, they required the roundabouts and they installed them. That happened a lot quicker than we anticipated because there was a need for housing, people wanted to move to the area. So within, I think it was within five years of the East Royalty Plan, the province came in and put in the roundabouts. So at this point in time, we can't project when that's going to happen, but the province will be monitoring that. And they'll know when, you know, the threshold is reached for St. Peter's Road and they need to to do further upgrades. So we kind of have to leave that to them. That's their their area. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just saying, after the meeting, we did go meet with some of the residents at one of their houses and talk about some of their concerns.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions? Any of the planning board members? Any other questions? Okay, well, if there's no other questions, we do have a recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Department to encourage the planning board to recommend to council to approve the request to amend the Appendix A of the official planned use, land use map of the city of Charlatown from low-density residential to high-density residential, and to approve the request to amend Appendix G zoning map of the Charlatown zoning and development bylaw from the low-density residential single zone R2S to the apartment residential zone R4 for Phase Three of Hidden Valley subdivision located west of Malpec Road, being a portion of PID 1047562. So do I have somebody who would like to move that resolution? Moved by, send. Do I have a second? Yep, seconded by Councilor Beck. So the resolution is on the floor. Does anyone have any questions to the resolution?
I just have one, Deputy. I just wanted clarification.
Go ahead, Councilor McCabe.
I was thinking about this because as we started, you know, the process of opening up our official plan and stuff, would this area be kind of considered eventually in a one of the noids as far as where it is, how it fits as we increase transit and and those things that we've talked about with this? Like what I'm trying to visualize how it's going to fit, what the recommendations coming in from the new official plan, would this area be part of what that would look like?
I would have to look at the document, but I I do feel this would be in line with what we we have talked about. I can't remember exactly what the the mapping showed, but I mean, we are trying to promote higher-density development. We know there's a need for housing. So I think this does fit the threshold. It is it's close to shopping within a transit, short transit ride. There's a number of things that we discussed earlier, but yeah, I that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Laurel and Councilor McCabe. Any other questions on the resolution? Okay, question. Okay, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for that. And thank you to the applicant for being here. And thank you, Laurel, for the report. So we're moving on to our final agenda item. And that Laurel, you're up again. This is for Lot 160, Fairdale Drive, PID 192153. And I will pass this over to you, Laurel.
Land use map, sorry, the city of Charlatown official plan from medium-density residential to high-density residential to amend Appendix G, the zoning map of the Charlatown zoning and development bylaw from MUR, medium-density mixed-use residential zone to R4B apartment residential zone. Property details, the subject property, it's approximately 8.2 acres, and it's located off Fairdale Drive. The property is bounded to the north by R2S, low-density residential single-zone properties, to the east by R2S, low-density residential single-zone properties, to the south by property-zoned open space and Splendid Drive, and to the west by MUR, medium-density mixed-use residential zone properties and Kendrick Avenue. So specifically, the request is to rezone approximately 8.2 acres of land located off Fairdale Drive to the R4B apartment residential zone and subdivide the property into six lots to accommodate high-density residential development for new apartment buildings. The proposed density for the overall site is approximately 192 units, 32 units per building. However, the size of the property, it may permit up to 213 units, provided that the minimum parking requirements under the zone can be met in the future. So in accordance with Section 3.10, amendments to the bylaw and rezoning, the zoning and development bylaw on July 10, 2023, City Council approved the request to proceed to public consultation. On July 9, 2024, written notification was sent to 45 property owners located within 100 meters of the subject property. In response to the city's notification letter, three letters of opposition were received prior to the 12 noon deadline on Wednesday, January 2024, 2024, and additional letters were also received after the 12 noon deadline. Following the deadline, one letter of opposition was received. So comments from the from the public meeting and received from the letters, many of the comments regarding the development centered around traffic that will be generated from the development. Lucy Mon Montgomery School is currently at capacity, and there was concerns where would children that would live in these apartment buildings, where would they attend school? The area used to be farmland, and people felt that it's being developed with housing. It's changed the context of their neighborhood. A lot of residents stated that during construction of Montgomery Heights, they had to put up with dust that was generated from construction over the past few years. And they've a lot of residents felt that the property should remain for community care and seniors' housing. This is the proposed concept plan. So to address some of the concerns and comments that we received through the public process, at the public meeting, the developer compared density calculations for multi-unit residential housing and community care and nursing homes. Given the lot area for each property, staff concur with the the density calculations as provided by the developer. However, with any development, it's up to the property owner to determine if they will develop to maximum capacity. So basically, if the properties are developed for institutional uses, it would be up to the property owner to basically to determine the demand. The developer indicated that a lot of those buildings would be five stories. That could happen. The land area is there to support that density, but whoever is developing it would determine what they were willing to develop. So according to staff's calculations based on lot size, 208 apartment units are permitted under the R4B zone. 258 rooms are permitted for community care or nursing homes under the institutional zone. Given that institutional uses require support service such as health professionals, care workers, ancillary staff, that would include kitchen and cleaning staff, et cetera, as well as visitors, compared to if you compare this to multi-unit residential, which would also would mainly be occupied by residents and visitors. So if someone was living in an apartment building, it would be the residents, and then whoever would be coming to and fro to visit them. We feel that that the institutional zoning would be more intensive use for the site. The concept drawings show surface parking for this development. You can see it here in black as well. Parking calculations will be conducted at the building permit stage to ensure each building meets the parking requirement set out in the bylaw, either through surface or underground parking. The law coverage and density for each of those buildings will determine if those lots can support surface parking or if underground parking would be required. During the public meeting, residents indicated that LM Montgomery School was not able to accommodate additional students. And it was stated that additional families would put stress on a school that was already at capacity. And I think a lot of you are aware that there was an addition done to the school in the recent past. So staff would like to provide clarification that during the development of the East Royalty Plan, the Department of Education was consulted to discuss future educational needs for the area. And it was, oh, my gosh, it was identified then that LM Montgomery was nearing capacity. It was recognized that as the neighborhood grew, there would be a need for expansion of the school, and therefore, an area south of Cambridge Drive on provincial lands was zoned for institutional use for a future school site. The Department of Education, it's their job to determine the needs and the operational requirements of the school, and they will determine when and if it is appropriate to increase capacity in this area and construct a new school. At the public meeting, the developer also presented traffic calculations for the number of trips generated for both apartment buildings and community care nursing home facilities. The numbers presented were apartments, 213 units would generate 1,436 trips, and a community care facility with 263 rooms would generate 1,490 trips. Staff had reviewed these numbers with the Provincial Department of Transportation, and it is agreed that the anticipated daily traffic counts for the current approved institutional uses would have similar daily traffic counts to the request at multi-unit apartment buildings. So this count, it's based on using an average slightly less than two beds per room for a community care facility. So if if it was just less than two beds per room, it would be equal to what the developer was indicating at the public meeting. And that determination is based on the Institution of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual. The concept plan was also circulated to fire services, and the proposal meets the requirements for access and dimensions for fire apparatus. Further code review will be required at the building permit stage when they come in with applications. So given this is high-density development, it would be appropriate for the developers to also enact restrictive covenants for each property and the overall development to ensure a high quality of landscaping is incorporated on each property. In addition, landscaping plans can be required at the building permit stage. The city, as you're all aware, were experiencing an increased demand for housing. The vacancy rate within the city is very low. The official plan has various policies which support the efficient use of services and making neighborhoods stable and sustainable by supporting more density in neighborhoods that are serviced. I've included the the policies for the official plan within the report for your review. This neighborhood does already support moderately higher density, and there are townhouses and some multi-unit developments to the south of the property. There are also amenities in the area, such as an elementary school, and there is open space parkland that was dedicated through the subdivision process. The city's T3 transit system is also accessible in this area, and a dedicated transit stop would be allocated near to this development. So I've also included a quick summary of the subject applications, positive attributes, neutral attributes, and shortcomings in the report for your consideration. I'm sure you had a chance to look them over. And basically, in conclusion, this lot, it is a substantial-sized parcel. The current zoning does allow for a mix of housing and choices ranging from low-density to medium-density development and institutional uses. So there is a range there, but it is in high-density development. However, in the East Royalty area, there are only a few properties that permit higher-density development. And if this property were rezoned to allow for apartment dwellings, it would provide more housing within the neighborhood. Given the property's proximity to services and amenities, it is appropriate to cite lower high locate higher-density development. If the property is rezoned, we would require appropriate land use buffers. They would have to be integrated to mitigate any perceived land use conflicts that may arise between lower and higher-density development. And it should also be considered that there is a severe shortage of housing in the city when you're reviewing this application. Higher-density development does make efficient use of service land. It's supported in Section 3.10 of the official plan. In addition to housing options, density also makes new and existing businesses more viable. It supports public transit and contributes to the tax base, which allows municipalities to provide better service to residents. It is staff's opinion that the proposal meets many of the technical requirements for locating higher-density development within a neighborhood, and staff feel that this request has merit and meets many of the policies of the official plan. Therefore, we are recommending for approval of this rezoning request. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for your report, Laurel. Any questions? Is the is the applicant here this evening, Laurel?
No, I believe the applicant is out of the country.
Okay, so I will open up the floor. Go ahead, Councilor McCabe.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I'll try and group as many as I can. But as the councillor responsible for the area, obviously, I have to speak for my residents. So to start, Laurel, our East Royalty Master Plan, I'm trying to find it. It looks like it was adopted in 2015. Would that be correct?
Yes, around that time.
So nine years ago. So in nine years, we rezoned, and we had lots of identified areas for for this mixed-density housing. And we've blown up in Montgomery Heights from in in three years, four years, something that was projected to take 20 years, 10 years, somewhere in that range. So I don't think this is a case of NIMBY. And the difference between this application and the one we just saw is this is being proposed to plunk right in the middle of already proposed to plunk right in the middle of already, already zoned our one and our two properties. So this isn't out on the highway where we're projecting. We're proposing changing the land use that these people bought their properties with the understanding it was going to be a community care. Whether there's that many people coming and going, that is a concern. We heard very clearly in our Public Works meeting that McWilliams Road is in need of an upgrade, that it was a road that, I think Deputy Mayor was there when it was said right online that it's, it's a road that, we have infrastructure out there that definitely needs to be, to be upgraded if we're going to continue to develop at this capacity, for sure. The school, I know it's a provincial responsibility, but when we're planning, I think that's where we're sign where we need to collaborate better. There is no more room at LM Montgomery School, for sure. That's, that place is blown up. Another positive in the report indicates that there was public transit ser, we don't have public transit service in East Royalty. We have one run that goes around the outskirts of East Royalty in the morning, and it drops off in the afternoon. We tried, we ran a pilot project when I was first elected six years ago, not enough uptake, therefore, they weren't able to continue. So I'm sure it will improve, and we'll be able to justify transit service, but right now, there's none. We don't have grocery stores in East Royalty. We have Mel's, we can go to Mel's, and you can get eggs. Parkland, yep, lots of good parkland and stuff, but where there's less chance of senior housing. You know, when we talk about harmonious, I think there, there's such a diverse type of development happening out there that, that residents felt that this seniors place that was approved nine years ago was a good, a good part of the community to keep people in our community. Can you tell me how many times there's been changes to the Montgomery Heights Plan since this started? How many times we've looked at rezoning what we approved nine years ago?
Yes, through the chair. This is the only application we've had for rezoning for Montgomery Heights.
Okay, okay.
And, and just to note, when we did do the East Royalty Plan, we did propose a significant amount of higher density, and at that time, we had a lot of opposition from residents, so we had to scale it back. There was a need at that time for higher-density development, but we changed the plan at that time to accommodate comments that were received through the public process.
And I think they've done a good job with that. I, I just think there's been a whole lot. We still have roads and subdivisions in East Royalty that don't have lights for maritime, and I know it's Maritime Electric's fault, and I know it's somebody else's fault, but at the end of the day, if we don't have infrastructure to support what we were approving and we're developing, I don't care whose fault it is, you should have lights. It's a safety thing. And if we're going to project and develop for that many more units and that much more traffic, whether it's the community care or whether it's the apartments, then as a city, we'd better be upgrading our infrastructure so that we can maintain and hold that. This isn't, I'm, this isn't against what your approval is. I'm just trying to point out the facts is it's fast and furious, and we're not keeping up. So, you know, if we're going to commit, and I get development, and I get shortage of housing, this isn't going to be affordable housing, though. This isn't going to be that, that buzzword of people being able to afford it. These are going to be expensive units. It's expensive to live out there. And infrastructure's improving, but they don't have sidewalks, and they don't have streetlights, and I don't think it's harmonious when you plop it in the middle of already existing R1, R2 zones, and that wasn't what the original plan was. So I'm going to have a hard time supporting that one, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Was there any comment that you wanted to make, Laurel, from Counselor McCabe's comments? Not putting you on the spot, but if there was any, if there were any questions that you could extrapolate from that story?
Yes, through the chair. I guess I would note that the zoning is MUR, so it's mixed-density zoning. I understand your concerns, and, and I understand that you are, you know, addressing your residents' But I think when this plan was done, as the developer did indicate, we were looking at the East Royalty Plan, and we were looking at various options for housing, and one of them was the seniors' housing. He has indicated that over the past 10 years, or whatever it has been, that we've, you know, we've been dealing with the East Royalty Plan, there hasn't been an interest for seniors' housing. It's being located in other areas. We do need housing. We, I mean, we have to look at being able to be objective and open to other forms of housing. And I understand the residents in East Royalty. I mean, it was, it was a countryside. There was horses, there was cows, there was everything. But this is within the city. It's an urban area, so growth is going to happen. We have to just look at making sure that we put growth in the right location. The other thing is, to make a point to your, your comment on your, your point about no grocery stores, we also did try to locate grocery stores within East Royalty. We went through a couple of rezoning applications. The residents didn't want them. They ended up with an R2-zoned property that just accommodated semi-detached dwellings. We were trying to create a village center at that time. Now, we do have a developer that's annexed more land into East Royalty, and that land, they're looking at doing more commercial-type of zoning, which would create the village center for East Royalty. So, no, we don't have a village center right now, per se, but over time, we're working on that, and hopefully, that will occur, so.
Counselor McCabe?
And I, I appreciate the growth, and I appreciate all of that. My first lot that I bought in East Royalty, I was surrounded by farmland, and I thought it was wonderful. Before I broke ground, there was two complete subdivisions on either side of me, so that's how fast. I appreciate that that's where we're going, and what I have to keep hammering, though, is, as a council, if we're going to keep approving these things, then, then we're going to have to invest in the infrastructure, on the roadways, and the things that were the country road for two-lane roads, and now we have, you know, it's not holding up. It's not, it's not able to, it's not able to be maintained. So as we progress, we still have to keep up with other things. So, you know, I'm just making points that, yes, I appreciate that it's growing, and that, I know, I tell people, if you see a piece of green grass beside you, you can assume it's going to be covered with something. We are a city, we're growing, and it's fast, but it's really, really fast out here, and we're not keeping up with what we need to do. We just keep approving without really collaborating and looking at the bigger picture, whether it's working with the province on schools, whether it's working with our transit system, whether it's, you know, it's just really fast, and I hate reacting. I like proper. I know you're planning, but I don't know if everybody's planning.
Yes, through the chair. We are working with the, the province and schools, and that's why we did allocate that area within the East Royalty Plan, because we knew LM Montgomery was going to be able to accommodate another expansion, but past that, with the amount of density that was going to happen in East Royalty, we would need an additional school. So the province was one of the major stakeholders, the Department of Education, at the time when we did the East Royalty Plan. I agree 100% on the infrastructure, as far as McWilliams Road. We will, like, the city will need to do upgrades. I know residents are concerned about lighting. That's an issue. During COVID, there's been shortages of materials. It's been harder for Maritime Electric and the developers to get the material in that they need to put the lighting in. So hopefully, that will catch up soon. It has to be done. I mean, every subdivision needs lighting, let's face it. As far as sidewalks, as I stated earlier in the previous application, that has never been within the road profile, and the city didn't require it. I think for the simple reason that they felt that subdivisions were local streets and people weren't driving fast, therefore, they didn't need sidewalks. But I think with more density and the push from residents, Public Works is looking at changing the road profiles to incorporate sidewalks. So hopefully, within the, the near future, you'll start to see that happen as new subdivisions develop.
Thanks, Laurel. Just when you mentioned the identified area for the, for the school, was that not in that St. Martha's Court area? And did we not just hear an application last week that they've asked to remove that school area in that area? Was that not part of that last application from last week?
Yes, Madam Chair. So that isn't in St. Martha's Court. That's actually on the provincial lands, that's near Acadian Drive. There was an application that was before the board last week, but that was preliminary. We still have to talk to the province and the, the planners that are working on that, and that was brought up to them when they were doing their initial review. So I think there's going to be some changes on that, I would hope.
Sure.
And maybe David can respond to that.
Sure, and it was my understanding that, that when you mentioned the annexed land, there was some indication of, of a possible other area for the school in the East Royalty area, so obviously, they must be planning ahead on that.
I'm not aware of that. The Lewis Brothers are probably, I haven't spoken to them on that application, but I would expect they may be talking to the school board on that. But as we deal with that application and the other application that the province has in, we'll, we'll look to address that. But it is a recognized need. We, we, we do need it. Do you have anything to add to that, David?
Yeah, just further to Laurel's comments through the chair, I'll just mention the application, what we called the Hillsborough Park Concept that was before the board last week. We have had further conversations with the province since that meeting. We had a call with provincial staff today. They're going to circle back, have chats with the school board to further speak to that original proposal that would see a new school site in that area. At this point, we're just waiting for further comments from the school board, and those will flow through with any future, future meetings that regard that application, so.
Great, thanks. And my mistake when I referenced St. Martha's Court, I did mean Hillsborough. Just looking at the wrong agenda item, so my apologies. Go ahead, Counselor McCabe. I think you were ready to go.
Yeah, no, thank you, and thank you for pointing that out, because that's kind of an example of what I'm talking about, when we know that there's all these things that are out, out in the sphere, but they're not nailed down with any kind of a specific plan, right? And I'm not saying it's any one department or any one level of government, but I just said, at what point do we, I know we got to catch up, I know we got to upgrade, I know we, but why do we continually approve what we're looking to approve today while we still wait to catch up, while we still wait to get lights that are back-ordered till we, I'm just really struggling with, I, I said, I'd like to start to say no to development until we can at least do it right regardless. That's where I'm feeling, even though I know I wouldn't do that. But in this case, I'm, I'm struggling, for sure.
Go ahead, Laurel.
Yes, Madam Chair. So as far as the school goes, that's already been worked out. We've, the East Royalty Plan has, is a master plan. It's already identified a site for the school. If the Hillsborough Park development changes and takes that site out, that's an amendment to the East Royalty Plan. So the school board has to be consulted on that. Therefore, if they remove that site, and the school board recognizes that there is a need, and I assume they will, because they did when we dealt with them 10 years ago, that there is a site, that there is a requirement for a new school, then an alternate location has to be determined within that neighborhood. So whether it's the land further north along St. Peters Road, or east, I should say, or if it's, you know, if it remains within the Hillsborough development, that's undetermined at this time. But currently, there is a site that's allocated for that school.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah. I, I just have a couple of things. Kind of two, I guess they're both, they're both, they're both kind of connected. The first one is around on page 101. If rezoned, a screen buffer will be needed to be provided between the apartment dwellings and surrounding lower-density. So the way that property is developed, it's basically fronted on four, four sides. What does, how do we, and I guess, you know, to try and, if this goes ahead to accommodate the surrounding properties, what does that screen buffer look like, and how, how would it work? How would it, how effective would it be in terms of providing that measure of, because you, you referenced earlier, Laurel, that there had to be, I forget your wording, basically a distinction between uses of property or something like that, or, I forget whatever words you used, but looking at it there, one, two, three, three sides with either R1L or R2S around it, how do they, what does he, what are the mitigating steps to provide that buffer, and what does that buffer look like? Or could it, or could the buffer look like?
Yes, through the chair. We would require a landscape buffer, like a heavily treed buffer. So what you're seeing right now is their site concept plan, but as I stated in my report, we would require restrictive covenants and landscape design at the building permit stage. So what you're seeing here, as far as footprints, would be, I would doubt that you're going to see those footprints. As we work with the developers, depending on the lot size and, and what they're proposing, we would look to incorporate landscaping, possibly underground parking, those kinds of things. It's, I mean, these lots will be sold, I would assume, so it's hard for the developer to just put a concept plan forward and say, these are the buildings that are going to be built. But that's why we're asking for him to put restrictive covenants in place, and then we would work with the developer on the buffer and screening. I hope that helps.
Well, I guess that kind of goes to my second one, which was on page 103. I, I just thought that the, the wording was kind of loose there. We were talking earlier, again, going back to the Hidden Valley one from our previous submission, where in order to effectively integrate into the existing Country View over to the, what is that, the east? Country View and Penny Lane over to the east was separated by Malpeck Road, and then you've got the High Field subdivision to the west. So there were, you know, pretty well-defined and determined covenants that were put in place there. I just, I would hope that there would be a similar type of covenants done in the same way if this were to go ahead on that property. Would that be the case?
Yes, through the chair. I would expect we would be working with the developer to ensure that. I just wanted to note that this, you'll see this, this is the concept plan for Montgomery Heights. So the square in the center is the parcel we're talking about originally when it was shown on the East Royalty Plan. Around that, we've included MUR zoning, which is, is the same zone. And the reason we did that when we did the East Royalty Plan was to buffer the lower-density development, which is here, from this higher-density development, because we knew that even if this was a nursing home or seniors' home, then that is going to be a more intensive use than, than what you have over here. So that's why we require this MUR zoning that circled that, that parcel, and that's the parcel that's in question today. When this gets developed, we would be asking the developer requiring, as per the bylaw, a buffer around this area. Some of those buildings are townhouses, and I think there might be a couple of small apartment buildings, like maybe in this.
I think there's one unit that has like four or six units along. It'd be on that splendid, splendid drive, I think it's called, the one there to the west.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you, then you're saying that the, those, the buffering would be part of development agreement or building permit agreement, whatever it might be?
Part of the building permit agreement. The bylaw requires, I think it's a 13- or 15-foot buffer between lower-density residential and higher-density residential, so we would require it as per the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
Sen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, not really a question, but a comment on, on this present application. See, city is growing, no doubt about it. You know, population is growing, and the, and the landscape, the cityscape will continue to change. And 15 years ago, like 10 years ago in 2015, in the East Royalty Master Plan, they identified it to be a, you know, high-density, but it wasn't, it didn't go through because the residents around that area, you know, kind of opposed to that idea. But from 2015 to 2019... But from 2015 to 2024, things have changed. We have more population growth in the city, and the way the, you know, it's catching up with us right now. Um, yes, uh, designing a city is more of a, it's a multi-jurisdictional issue, no doubt about it. You know, your schools need to be improved, they need to have more capacity. So, excuse me. Well, we cannot approve or reject, you know, an application based on consideration whether, you know, how fast the province is moving. We can only do what we can do at our end, and that is to approve projects as much as possible to accommodate the growth. I think the province needs to catch up at some point of time, but I leave it to them. But in support, I'm just speaking in support of this application at the moment, and I hope it can help some of the members to give it due consideration.
Thank you, Sen, for that. Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, seeing no other questions, we do have a recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Department to encourage the planning board to recommend a council to approve the request to amend Appendix A, the future land use map of the city of Charlottetown from medium-density residential to high-density residential, and to approve the request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from the medium-density mixed-use residential, MUR, to the apartment residential zone, R4B, for the subject property located at Lot 160, Fairdale Drive, PID 192153. So do I have somebody who moved by Lee McDonald? Do I have a seconder, seconded by Bobby Kennedy? Bobby Kenny? Hmm. Um, so, resolution is on the floor. Any questions on the resolution? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Is there a question, Bob? No, no, no.
All those in favor? Okay. Any opposed? We have one opposed, Counselor McCabe. Okay. Thank you, folks, for that. So, any introduction of new business? Seeing none, I will have a request to adjourn our public meeting. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor McCabe, and all those in favor. Wonderful. Okay, thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.